This is Access LaPorte County Channel 97. Coming up next is the August 18th meeting of the Michigan City Commission for Women. You can find more information for this meeting at www accesseslaporte county dot org.
So let's go ahead and I will call the meeting to order. Commission for Women.
And then I'll do a little call. Sarah Jones. Sonia Shep.
Here.
Faymore.
Here.
Paul Coleman, here. Christina Isabel.
Here.
Albertine Allen.
Here.
Charlene Lipsey.
Here.
Veronica Martin.
Here.
Angie Nelson Deutsch.
It's not, not coming. She has another.
Okay. And do I still say Jo Annson? Or?
No.
But she's been.
And our new member, Belinda Lee.
So.
Did you call her?
No, she isn't on number five.
Oh, she's on line.
Okay, great. I do want to say that I think our meeting minutes are, the wrong date is on the one. So they both say June 8th. I don't know if anyone has noticed that, if you did look at them. So I think that. One of them is from June 16th. And one is from June 8th.
It was the 16th.
So.
So if I'm the one that, so I was the secretary of pro temp, so the error is probably mine.
Okay.
Wait a minute, yeah.
So.
Thanks.
Because I wasn't here at the last, I was not here at the last meeting.
So it's not your fault.
And you probably weren't here, but I'd seen the minutes out.
But we didn't have form in July, right?
We did not have a form in July, so we actually need to.
Change the date.
Well, we changed the date, but.
You're right.
Also approve both sets.
Okay, okay.
Someone needs to change the date.
Yes, someone needs to change the date. Do you guys, I don't, I'm sorry that I did not print out copies of everything, but I do have a copy of the June 8th one. Available. Anyone needs to see that one. Or if you want to see these ones, I can.
What were the dates of the meeting?
June 8th was one meeting and June 16th was one meeting.
Okay.
And first, it was very confusing for me. I was like, wait!
So we don't need to change.
One of them we don't need to change the date for, and one of them we do.
Okay. I think the June 8th is actually, the one that's printed June 8th, that should be June 16th, was a regular meeting. Is the ones I took.
Okay, then what's the June 8th one?
We did one that was via Zoom in June. Well, there was two of us.
But it wasn't a, it was a committee.
That was not a committee. That was, oh, you did one in City Hall, and that was June 8th.
Okay.
And then we had our regular meeting on June 16th.
Okay, I was not at the June 16th, I was on the Zoom one.
Okay, so these are the June 16th.
Okay.
I recognize my typing anywhere.
It just kind of looks different. And then that's the June 8th one, so if you can just look at those for a moment, so we can.
And then July, we did or did not?
We did not have forms, just had the guest speaker.
Right.
So if anyone does need to see these, we can pass them around. Exactly.
That's my guess.
I know. Here's the June 16th one, does anyone need to see that one?
I'm good.
You're good?
Yeah.
Okay.
Can I print this, like this? I like it.
I know.
So whether you want to see it or not? There you have it.
Okay, so would we like to go ahead and.
Can you to print the June 16th and the.
Yes.
We didn't get a motion to approve, we just rescinded, so what is the motion to approve the minutes for June 16th?
June, let's start with June 8th.
June 8th, and make a motion that we approve the minutes for June 8th.
Okay, second.
Great. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. And then the June 16th minutes. We would just need to amend that to say June 16th.
We're gonna accept, make a motion that we accept the minutes for June 16th with additional amendments.
A second.
And all approve of June 16th.
Aye.
Aye.
Fantastic.
All right, and we are on to the Treasury's report.
So you sent a, did we have a pass form we needed to approve?
Oh, yes, we needed to approve the June Treasury report. But I did not bring that, I only brought the July one with me today.
I guess just because we're confused because.
Because we didn't have a form in July, so this would have been the meeting.
That you approved.
That we would have needed to approve.
Yes.
Okay, so it says July 21st Treasury's report. That is what we need to approve.
So is that.
That was, that was from last month's meeting, so I didn't print that at all, so. You have the only copy, I guess.
Okay, here. Sorry, guys. Haven't been printing things, the cost.
This is, it's August.
I will say, doing the June and, you know, I'm a little confused, so we're still in August, right?
We are in August now.
So we actually approve in the July. This is good.
So then we'll get a chance to look at it. That's good. And motion to approve.
All motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Bonnie.
Excellent. Now, we are on to our fifth line here, and that is to appoint our newest member to the commission. And this is Belinda Lee, who is our, from the League of Women Voters.
So we have to have a motion?
So we have to have a motion, and we gave.
The motion that we approved, Belinda Lee, to be a member of the Women's Commission, is what you want?
Yes.
Okay. I second the motion. And we need to, well, I think we were supposed to accept that letter, that LWV.
The letter. I have the letter, and as soon as we all say aye right now, I will send that in with our letter. Are we all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Fantastic, thank you so much for joining us.
Thank you.
Welcome. Great.
So I'm Belinda Lee, but I prefer to be called Belle, so I'm Belle Lee.
Oh, Belle Lee.
Belle Lee.
Is there a Belle that you would like to share?
So Belinda is my government name, but I've been Belle since I came home from the hospital, and so I'm Belle. And I just happened to marry a man whose last name is Lee, so now I'm Belle Lee. And I'm able to laugh about it often.
I love that, my government name, my government name is Anna, but I go by Charlene, so. Which is confusing most everybody here.
Exactly.
Because you get emails from Anna. And that's.
It was.
Okay, you know, it was, I was like.
You're like, I missed that one.
Right. Maybe I wasn't there. And after the meeting, where she could, where my chair, where was she?
So now, we are on to our next agenda item, and that is our August 26th, celebrating 10 years of the Women's Commission. And first off, I want to just say thank you so much. We're a week away, and we are really almost there, it's so amazing, and I want to thank Bonnie and Albertine, and Sarah and Shar for really kind of stepping up and helping make these final, final weeks kind of really happen. I'm just so impressed with Albertine, who really sold the most tickets, I think we need to give her an award. Extra plate of food, something. Bonnie for coordinating the history, important women in Michigan City, it's incredible.
Thank you.
A lot of work.
It's so thorough.
And she was also, had some help from Albertine and Joanne, so we really, really appreciate that work. Sarah's just been cranking on the, on the program and all of our printed materials, so we really appreciate that. And Shar's keeping us in a proper organization money-wise, so we're, we're doing well. Just remind you that it is next Friday.
Yeah, so fast.
So, there we go, 6:30 is the, or 6 o'clock is the opening, but I think it would be, it would be great if we could have commissioners get to arrive earlier. If I say like 5:30, I'd say 5:00, there we go, I just got the 5 o'clock call. Sorry.
I will not be there, but I'll be there. Well, you know, those that can come, come.
So just a quick question, maybe on the agenda further, but have we defined roles for that evening? Who's going to be the checking people?
So, thank yous. We have, let's go, let's do the ticket sales, let's go for that.
So instead of, in lieu of a traditional Treasury's report tonight, I thought it might be nice to be able to kind of catch up on where we are as it relates to the gala. So if you first look at the one, the pretty colored one. What I have listed, if it is not in color, those are the individuals or organizations that have paid, that we've got receipts for, and the number of tickets. So you'll notice that we have a kind of a subtotal there. What's in the bank at the moment is $12,675. And that is, actually represents 96 tickets. And then the colored items there, so the one in yellow and the ones in red, are those who have, I think, said, we are coming, this is how many we're bringing, so we just need to get the check to you. So we want to keep that separate, so we know what else to be expecting. So what we're expecting is another $2,350. That's 33, represents 33 tickets, so that takes us up to 129 people. Now, we may, I've asked everybody to take a look at this and see if we're missing anyone. Particularly those who have bought tickets that we don't see here, so that we can see what the status is. You can see me after. And then what you don't see, what I didn't print out on this, is if individuals who bought more than one ticket have given their guest name, I've got, I've written that as well on the spreadsheet. So on that evening, I plan to have, have a alphabetized list along with the guests that we're expecting. So any questions about this particular list?
Okay, I have one.
Yeah.
Before I forget, the first one, and it has my name there, and then it appears twice for the same person. Down at the, you know, you said you misspelled that wrong.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So then it should be two instead of.
The three.
Instead of three.
So it should be three instead of.
It should be two instead of three at the top.
Got it, okay.
And then I can cross off the one at the bottom.
Okay, so that's one in the same, that's the one you're expecting.
Yeah, that's one in the same, yeah.
Okay.
And then.
So you're saying cross off the B.
Cross off which one? No, because one says three, one says two.
You cross off the one that says three.
Okay.
Oh, three.
And then in this slot down here at the bottom. Belle Lee, instead of three.
Yes.
We're going to purchase four, and I have my check in my hand.
Okay, perfect.
Okay, that's what I had.
Thank, thank you.
Thank you, but I only saw three. Yeah, but I mean, that was, yeah, I had four on my paper.
Okay, okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I will take your check.
I don't know, we write it to.
City of Michigan City.
I can cross you off of my list, Belle.
Thank you. So subtract one, add one, so. Thank you for making the math uncomplicated. Any other questions about this particular list?
And I do have the check for Jennifer Lawden and Kathy Nero.
And then mine is the 1, 2, 3, 4 person here. You still have to ask her. To receive her. The first one, fourth one down in red.
From, are you counting your, from your name? Yeah, I just don't have a, you don't have a check? No.
Okay.
And I think that was, I think Angie confirmed it, so.
Okay. And the one, I'll be getting those 1, 2, 3 at the bottom.
Okay.
Okay.
Perfect. So then the other.
So we have another check here, too.
Oh, great.
This is Frances Vega, one of the former commissioners.
I will, just realized I left it in the car.
Oh, okay.
Give me one second, and then I'll get it.
Great.
So the other sheet I passed out was just to give you kind of total numbers, a little bit more traditional of a.
The budget.
Yeah. So, and this is only for the gala, I haven't included what we have in the, I'm not including. What's already in the bank, this is just for the gala. So considering if, we've got what's in the bank and what is reserved, the tickets reserved and waiting for dollars, we're gonna, we have $15,025 as a result of the gala. Okay. And that's going to go up with Frances's check and the additional.
Later.
Yeah. And so we're at 129 tickets, that's after some corrections. Now, expenses, the O-Rock Shrine, we're gonna, we've already paid them a deposit. Albertine covered that for us, total's going to be 750 for the hall rental. We've got the DJ, Karnessa Carnes, and the Good Rhythm Trio. I understand that these numbers were, instead of, for the DJ, which, that should be at 250.
The DJ's 250?
250.
And there's also, so it's $50 increase in the rental.
Yes, that was my mistake. I had it as 350 versus 375. And then the Good Rhythm Trio, that is another 50 as well, so 350, that should be 350. The flowers, Albertine has taken care of the flowers already at 235.75. And really, I have receipts that Christina has provided, and then we have the food, which we just have to give them a final number, and, but this is what we know so far, so there's still something.
The other thing is croissages, three.
Okay.
And there will be more printing, because.
Wow.
Yeah.
Two different programs.
So I didn't total the, I didn't total the number, but I think if you look at what we brought in, and so far what we've spent, I think we're, I think we'll be in the.
We won't be in the red.
We'll be in the positive side of Vegas, yeah. My intention, so the other thing I've been trying to do, which we've been missing in the past, is we got a mail chip set up, so as we've captured emails, we'll include them in the database. And anything that I've had an address on, I have added it along with the list. So what I'm looking to do is create an archive, so that we're not wondering where are those lists, who has the list. And then I'm also, I want to track in the past, we're like, well, how much did we spend on this, how much? We'll have a breakdown of the gala, as in what we've spent on what, so we'll have a record moving forward.
Fantastic. And I do have names for some of the Horizon Bank table.
Okay, great, so if you just even want to send that, send that over to me.
Okay.
That's great, and then what I would say is, if I'm missing some expenses that I may not be aware of yet.
Send your email.
Send me an email.
She had more than one of these? She might.
Albertine, do you know how much the food was going to cost there?
No, I think you're supposed to go back out there with that count, and then you'll know, because it's per, it's per plate. We'd better get him the count tomorrow.
Yeah.
Because he thought it would only be 100.
Yeah. So we gotta get O-Rock, a table count. And we may want to.
So we're going to add croissages on here.
We may also want to look at what, so we're at 129. So we may want to cushion it, maybe just five plates. I don't know, we can agree on what that might look like, yeah.
I don't think Karnessa and Pat are on here, it looks like all the other speakers paid for their tickets.
Yes, so we do need to add, this was on our, the Good Rhythm Trio, Karnessa, and the DJ will be eating. So that's three more to add on for sure. What's interesting is I've only received nine names from Horizon, and they have the 16, you know. So that's an interesting.
We may, may not. They may not fill the table.
Yeah, so we might have the extra tables, so that's interesting.
So what I needed to know was, when can someone go out there with me to do the assignments at the table, so we can put the numbers on the table before Friday? You know, that he has to stand with the numbers, and we need to assign that.
Yes.
And I need a complete list, so I want to set people with family that you pay the ticket with, so. So I volunteer to. Belle, are you going to go in?
You're going Friday?
Bonnie, when are you going in to make sure the setup is, are you doing that day of?
I'm going on Wednesday.
On Wednesday.
I was going to share with you, I can get all of the names updated for you, so we have an updated list, and.
You have all of the names, but some of us have, you don't, I don't have like.
If I had.
People that go with these things.
Yeah, if I had, if I have them, I didn't print that copy. So there's, this spreadsheet is like two pages.
Oh, okay.
And so I didn't want to confuse this anymore tonight. So I can send you a full spreadsheet, and if I've got, if you've provided names, either when you turn to check here, or if I had them ahead of time, then I've added them.
Okay, so some of the, some of the family members didn't pay at the same time, so they wouldn't be in order, especially for my list.
Okay.
I just, just need to know.
Well, there may be, you may have, you may see one of your individuals with a couple of numbers, but I may not have who those are assigned to.
No, see, okay.
So I'm curious if it could happen on Wednesday? When Bonnie is checking out the tech at O-Rock, would that be a time?
We're going to set up the slideshow.
I'm going to set your slideshow up Wednesday? What time, when, Wednesday?
I don't know.
You don't know?
Because that would be a good time to then look at the tables.
I'm available that day.
Okay.
Okay. Bye, girls.
You just call me, I'll come. How about like 1 o'clock, was that, or 1:30? 1:30 actually, might work.
1:30.
I don't work well in the afternoon. I take a nap in the afternoon.
And then if anyone has, the important thing for us to remember is, before Wednesday, if you have names of people that you want at your table, we need to send that to.
Me.
Shar. By Wednesday, if there's specific people that you want to sit with, because, let's say that needs to happen on Tuesday. On Tuesday, so that Shar can get the list to Bonnie, Belle, and Albertine.
So there's like, for me, like mine's Sarah Jones, and there's two, obviously you're going to put two together.
Yeah.
But my daughter didn't leave my husband's name, so you might come across that with others, but you know our two, because I paid for two.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So you'll know those two, so the other people go together.
Yes.
And I think I might have, I already have that, so again, I just didn't print it.
Yes. And, and, yeah. So, so yes, so if you have specific people that you want at your table, send that to Shar by Tuesday.
And so I would like to know, since I'm new, can I be, I believe I'm in your email streams already.
Yes, yes.
And so.
Yes, it's under my government name.
Are you trying to put names with faces?
Uh, no, so I, well, because I need to know who to send my information to, Anne.
And then. In the program, do you want Anne, Charlene, or Anne, or just Charlene?
No, because I probably did list her.
So I've got one that just says Charlene for the sponsor, and then the commissioner says your full name, so which would you prefer?
You can put Charlene.
So check off one of my questions here.
It would probably make more like Nancy and Shar, because that seems to be a hyphenated name, Nancy and Shar.
All right, good, 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 so yeah, that's situated. We will need some, some jobs on the day of, such as the sign up table, for when people arrive. Do we want to sign those jobs at this time?
I'll volunteer to work, anybody else?
I'll volunteer to work, just let me where you say.
Okay. And here you guys will be at the sign up table.
At the sign up table?
Or, you know, like when people, the check in table.
Yeah, check in.
Check in.
That's cool.
And I'm also thinking that we want to do, have an email list to get, just to get more names, so we should have a sign in for emails there with you guys.
I have a question, are we using paper, are we going to use electronics? What did you say? The sign in list, a sign in list. I suppose they have it. Mine in writing, in case the computer couldn't get internet out there, you know, in case something happens. I need a paper copy, so I have something to go by. Now, somebody can bring their laptop if they want to, but I need a piece of paper, so I can cross you, if you come in the door. Okay. I mean, because people, other people don't write paper, but I do.
Well, I love paper.
Okay.
Paper's lovely, but in the electronic age, to have people sit down and like, write down your email address, so I would be willing to receive emails from everyone personally, and then I can share.
Okay.
Yeah, and I will share them with the commission, and people can just send me an email to my email, and then I have theirs.
Okay.
And I will compile them as.
The check in table, right?
Yes, you can use paper, I'll use electronics, and we'll have more than one list.
Excellent, great.
And then I'll send them all out.
Yeah, and then we'll have.
I'm sorry, I have a thing for.
We can have it with the, put it in our mail ship for future mailing.
Yes.
We're good, great.
And then you'd be so kind, can you share your, the mail ship address with me, and then people can just send them there directly, and we'll be done.
I will, I'd be happy to, I'll have to send it to you, because I don't have it on top of my head.
I'm sorry.
I mean, I can.
I'll need to bring them in the mail.
Yeah, yes, we have it for you.
Okay, thank you.
Are there other jobs that I'm missing that we would need, and that would be.
Miss Belle, you sent you, and did anybody else?
So, oh, we have, Shar is going to take some photographs for us. I was thinking it would be great to have it videoed, and what does everyone think about, like the speeches, everyone's talk, not the entire event, but just like, for record, what does people think about that?
So that will be.
To have it videotaped, the.
You want someone to videotape the event?
Yeah.
The speakers, at least.
At least the speakers.
And do you have a projected cost for that?
Um, we do have some budget for that. Let's see if I brought that spreadsheet present with me today.
And you already have it in mind?
No, I don't, I'm just bringing it up tonight, because I just thought it would be a good idea.
Well, we can.
So. Then we definitely, we definitely have budget. Can we ask him now? Would you like to.
Is the X report available to?
You have to talk to Drew.
To Drew.
To Drew, okay. All right, I will.
Set up with the old Central School building?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. All right, so we'll.
Do it on the inside.
So that's something I'd like to try to arrange.
You'll call him, or you're going to go back?
You have to look him in the face. It works better.
All right. So in our. So in our program...
Who's got the program?
Definitely have a few changes here, but just to go over with you guys, like the order of the speakers. We'll have an invitation by Keisha Ward, and then it will be the welcome from myself. And then we will go to, okay, yeah, I gotta, lots of changes, it's okay. Into Sharon Carnes. And this is all happening, you know, while people are eating their salads, those first two, you know, speakers. Then, and I will also explain the history game that will be on everyone's table. And this is an example, each table will have one to two, depending on how many ta... One, one per table. And we're hoping that people will engage by, you know, like tapping their glass while they're eating, and then stand up and give us the clues, and we'll see if we can figure it out. So we have some interaction during dinner. Dinner is a buffet, just so you all know that. Then we will have, Bonnie will then talk about the history project and some of the Naomi Anderson projects. And then we will go into a performance by Karnessa Carnes that is happening during dessert.
A sweet ending.
Yes.
She's awesome.
Yes. Then the remainder of the evening, those first speaker, you know, that's gonna be about ten minutes, you know, in the first part, fifteen minutes maybe. The Karnessa and Bonnie will be about like a five to ten. And then the speakers in the end will be, Albertine Allen will talk. She will introduce Sheila Matias. And please tell me if I'm saying that name wrong.
Matias.
Matias. Matias, thank you. And then Angie Deitch Nelson will speak to introduce Patricia Boy. And then...
Angie Nelson Deitch?
Deitch. Why, why is that wrong? Thank you. This is written wrong.
I don't really spell it wrong.
No, I think it's Nelson. It's Nelson Deitch.
And those people will leave after dinner sometimes.
I can't read it.
So why switch it from there, I remember, to make that right?
So the music and dancing is in the wrong order on this program. Yes, obviously that will be at the end of the evening. So at the closing...
Because you need to make the closing.
Yeah, we'll do the closing and then let everyone know that we can dance.
We can dance.
And since I'm talking about that dancing, if you guys have songs, I need to like get a playlist going for the DJ too, just to make sure I'm hitting kind of off everyone. Whatever we want. So if you have particular songs that you like, I think are good for a group party, just email me them.
Everybody can do that.
Great. So that is our program. Okay, so Bonnie, would you wanna go ahead and talk about this? This is fantastic. It's amazing.
Well, Albertine and I, Clay and Jelaine, a couple put together, did all this research and all these women, important women in Michigan City's history. And we're going to have the game that Christina had suggested. We're gonna have a table tent on each table that has questions about one of the women in this booklet. And then the table hopefully will discuss it and figure out who it is. Maybe they'll pick up this booklet and figure it out, but find the answer. But anyway, and there are several that nobody is gonna know the answer to, except me, and then, and Albertine. And then we put at the bottom of that, that after they figure out who it is, or they think they've figured it out, then if they wish to, they can stand up and announce and read all those questions to the whole, to everybody there, and see if anybody else can figure out who it is, so. And then we just thought, or at least I thought, that with all this research, and this is dozens of hours literally went into this, so we decided we really should put it in print. Yeah, so everyone can take it home. Yeah, yeah. And there's such a variety, and it's unbelievable, the stuff in this. Academy Award winner for Best Actress, Olympic Gold Medal winner multiple times. Just all kinds of stuff you would not believe. So anyway, so that's what we're gonna do about the history thing. And hopefully people will be doing that during dinner, standing up and announcing during dinner. And then we had, we're also putting together a slideshow, and it's in different parts. One part is, well, to begin with, it will be the list of all the names of all the commissioners we've had. And it's in the program too, Sarah put it in the program, all the commissioners. And then we have group pictures, including everyone, except right now, at this moment, it'll be fixed before this hour is done. We're missing Sarah and, I'm sorry.
Frances.
Frances, Frances, okay. Okay, Sarah and Frances and Veronica and Belle. So we need to get a picture tonight of all of us, but then we will have everybody that's ever been on the commission since 2012. We have picture, group pictures of everybody then. And then, oh wait, Jacqueline Dyer.
She doesn't want it.
It's really hard to keep my body. I was at work today. I was like, don't touch me.
Jackie Dyer doesn't want to be photographed. She doesn't want a picture.
Okay, okay. It'll be... I'm hiding about her. And, okay. And actually, I don't know how to do captions exactly, so I don't think we'll have captions on those pictures. But I think we have six different group pictures of the commissioners. And then we had asked for, Fay had been writing and asking everybody to turn in their bios, and we were gonna put that into the slideshow or the program. As it is, we received, I think now, ten out of the twenty-three. And each slide would have to be just one bio would be up on the, you know, on the screen for a minute or something. And it would be very, very hard to do, to put them into the slideshow, so I think we're gonna nix that. And I appreciate everybody that wrote their biographies for it and their information. Have it archived.
Well, and I was gonna say, we could probably put it on our website, right?
I've been putting them all together into one document, so I'll continue with this one. Could you email me this?
Yes, I emailed it to Fab, and I will send it to you.
Yeah. Then I'll update mine.
Okay, then I'll keep putting them together and then I'll get them to, yeah. Yeah, they could be on our website or Facebook page. And then we do need to take a picture tonight before we leave here.
Okay.
Okay?
Have you been doing two, the little one?
Yes, definitely, yeah.
Of course.
And then, oh, but after the, after the pictures of all the groups of us, then we have a lot of photographs from events we've done, mostly the luncheons. We have pictures of all of the speakers standing at podiums, some of the presidents standing at the podium, and a few group pictures of the speakers with some of us. And then we're going to have a document that I sent out, I can't remember who I sent it to, but it lists all of the grants that we've given out. It took, and it doesn't say how much we've given to each group, but the total is over thirty-five thousand dollars that we've given out. So, yeah, so we're gonna have that. And then we have pictures of several of the grant recipients that they've sent us. So then those will follow that, and I think that's it then for the slideshow, but that'll be a lot of...
It's gonna be a long slideshow, so you just have to keep looking.
That'd sound like it.
We've got a lot.
And I would like to apologize because I apparently misunderstood the assignment. I just sent it a quote.
I misunderstood.
I misunderstood the assignment.
That's what I did too, was just a quote. That's what I did.
I misunderstood.
Yeah, we just, we kinda kept changing it, you know.
Well, it's okay. One of our things didn't work out, but everything else is working out, so.
Yeah.
And we can...
Not all is lost.
Not all is lost.
I don't see it on the website.
Yeah.
It's lost just for this occasion. It can be revisited.
Yes. Any, anything else that we need to, questions on this event?
No, I just need to make sure we're going to the O-Rac on Wednesday. Is that at one o'clock?
Yeah, I have company then, so it...
You said one or one thirty?
One thirty.
One thirty?
Yeah, can you arrange that? Could you contact them?
Yes.
Let us, let us all know if that works.
We need to go plan on Friday or Thursday to put the numbers on the table. But I guess they won't be up before, he won't have them ready before Friday morning. But we need to make the seat assignment.
Well, that's what you're gonna do on Wednesday.
On Wednesday?
On Wednesday.
At the O-Rac?
Yeah.
Okay.
You're gonna, you're gonna make the seating assignments then. I'm not in town.
So it's...
So I can come.
But Belle and Bonnie will be there.
Okay.
And I'm gonna, everyone's sending your seat assignments, any table seat assignments that you want to Shar by Tuesday, so that Wednesday they can do the seating assignments. And then on Friday, when we're there at five, we can place them all, unless you guys are able to do that.
I'm gonna go Friday morning to put the centerpieces on the table.
But why can't you just wait till five?
Because she doesn't do...
Okay, okay, okay.
She's up early, so it'll be fine.
Okay, okay.
And that's always how it's done.
I'm trying to help you.
I have an accident, you know, so you know I have time to swing it out.
All right, all right, all right. All right, so I can help you with that.
Okay. What time on Friday morning is Tony? Oh, I don't get up before nine thirty, ten, so you know. But I'll be up real early because I have fifteen or twenty to make. The flowers are gonna come Thursday afternoon.
So you're doing flower arrangements on Thursday afternoon?
Friday morning. Thursday night, Friday morning. They'll be done by, they'll be done before noon.
Okay. She's got this design already.
I know, I know.
So we will connect with you Friday morning to help you complete that.
Okay.
Okay. Good.
So you're gonna... So you'll be at O-Rac at, or you're gonna be at your house?
What time?
I'm gonna be at my house.
Okay.
She said a time for Friday, Thursday afternoon, and I'm gonna start. And I'll soak my stuff overnight Wednesday, so it'll be ready for Thursday. So my question is, what time on Friday? Do you need assistance on Friday morning? I need assistance with getting them out there.
Yes.
Okay.
So like ten?
So I can call you about ten o'clock?
Okay.
Okay.
Great.
Because right now I just need somebody to just help me and just give me an assignment and I'll go. Like, I'll go there. I act you, girl. I cannot, you know.
All right.
I have no plans, but I'll follow instructions.
So I think that's, that's it. We can kind of let some other things on this agenda go to keep us on time. But I really, the next agenda item is scheduling our annual meeting. I'd really like to try to set that for September and for that to be a bit of a longer...
September issue?
Yeah.
Yes, we spoke, yes, we spoke, twenty twenty-two.
I mean, and if that means that we don't have, that might mean that we don't have our regular meeting, we would just have this annual meeting. And if we could do that on a weekend date, that would be probably best, so that we can have our space and time a little bit. Yeah.
And one day, are you considering?
I am considering. Let's see how it gets to my calendar. Well, we could look at that if we wanna, look at just our normal meeting would be September fifteenth. What if we tried it on the seventeenth or eighteenth?
I'll be out of town.
You're out of town.
I am as well.
Okay.
And that won't work as well.
Okay, great. That's definitely not working. How about the twenty-fourth, twenty-fifth weekend? Anyone?
Fine for me. Again, I'm out.
Okay.
You'll be in Germany for it?
I'm in Germany most of September.
Well, that sounds fantastic.
We have it in...
Yeah, we can do it.
It's always doing that first weekend, that's first weekend to walk.
We'll go to Germany and then to... We're gonna start in Berlin and in an Oktoberfest.
Fantastic. All right, so the tenth, eleventh is out then. Just made a change. Okay, just doing it. So let's see, look then in October? How about that first weekend in October, which is the eighth or ninth?
I cannot speak that for in advance without my schedules for my kids in front of me, because I don't know them off the...
I think, and again, we've done this in the past when we met at Barker Mansion, and it was like, we had lunch. It was, I think we did three hours. It's really just to kind of look at a totality for our goals for the year.
Can you send out a do...
I guess we can do that.
Okay, with several...
Did I do that recently? I did do that, okay. I know how to do it. So I was making sure I knew how to do that. Okay, dutiful will be coming.
So you know there's no September, right? So, right, because you're out of town the whole September.
Yeah, most of September.
So then that most likely would mean that we might still have our September meeting. And then October would be, you know, looking at that.
So we're gonna keep the regular meeting for September fifteenth, and we're gonna look into October for annual meeting?
Yes.
Thank you.
Great, and I will send out a dutiful for that. But that's, that meeting's really important, so that we can just kind of really...
We haven't had one of those in...
Bring one, we haven't, yeah.
Because of COVID.
I haven't had one. So, and that will be at an outside location. We're not filmed for that. It is open to the public, but we will not have a camera there.
An off-site location. We may not be outside, outside.
No, because it depends on the weather.
Yes.
Because I will say that in December, there are a number of people that are leaving the commission. So there's things that we need to kind of get looking at ahead of time for what's gonna happen. Okay. Just to keep us on track, that this year our funding will be going towards, you know, women's healthcare issues and childcare issues, so that we are still focusing on that. One of our projects is to put a resource list on the website. And so in the next couple of months, I'm just asking for people to brainstorm on organizations, child, children's law, family law, other organizations in town, Dune Brook, whoever we really want to be in this resource list, that we will update the website, the Women's Commission site with some resources for women. I think it's really important today because a lot of our resources are gonna be wiped out here, and we need to be able to offer that to our communities. So again, if you have anything, you can email me any of that at any time. Something that we'll keep looking forward to. Albertine and I met a few, like a month or so ago. And just brainstorming on this, the first idea of a listening session. And what we came up with was really working with organizations first, to find out what people are doing, to kind of create the opportunity for collaboration, communication, dialogue, so that we're not all working in silos within, in this community. You know, we're here, we should bring people together, find out what their issues are, where they're gonna get their funding in this next year. Because what happens when a state loses abortion rights, we lose all the social safety nets and funding. Right? So we already know that Indiana is very low in ranking. We are thirtieth for uninsured women. We are forty-first in maternal mortality. We're the thirty-ninth in infant mortality, and in child poverty, the twenty-third. We are down, really low, and this is going to be exasperated now. So, and we know that, and when the safety net is lost, it is going to hit black women harder than white women, three times as much. So what are we doing? You know, we need to start really researching and advocating in the right places. Right now, Indiana does have, has extended the Medicaid. That is the only thing that we have going for us. Indiana has one of the best Medicaid systems for children. I don't know, like, what their...
Indiana has one of the best Medicaid systems for children. I don't know, like, and what their post-partum, it's now extended a full year, right?
Yes, they extended it for twelve months now.
For the mother, which has been nice, and then every baby is covered at birth.
Yeah, Medicaid does cover four of ten, um, births nationwide.
Yeah.
Nationwide, so that's kind of interesting. But yes, we are one of the states.
A lot of states don't cover babies at birth, which is wild.
And, and actually Medicaid does cover contraception, you know, birth control. But not in a lot of our hospitals here.
Yes.
Right?
Yes, correct.
I mean, the only hospital on there. Was it, I said the only hospital on there.
The only hospital here.
I've, I've seen there's been a number of new, like, northwest clinic.
Correct.
Yes.
And the reason for that is because people needed other choices that were not available because of religious preference for our current hospital system. And-
That should be on our resource list though.
Yes.
I don't know what that is.
It had to be an option.
So, you know, we need to just realize that we are the commission for women, and we need to address these, these issues. Or find ways to offer the facts, the data, that, I mean, I've got a lot of data points that I've been researching now. We have to be able to offer that to our representatives and to each other, so, um, how are we gonna do?
Healthcare might be a good resource for you to look at. They have resources, they, um, give, uh, women, if they make an appointment there, free pregnancy tests, free first ultrasound.
Care Center.
Yeah.
They did the whole presentation.
The Women's Care Center did the presentation last month.
And then they meet with women with, like, options that you can take from there.
Albertine, are you on the, this, the Health Care Foundation, still have the infant mortality, healthy babies committee? They don't have any?
I don't know that they have it. I don't know over on that committee.
Okay.
And I can't say why.
So a couple of the, these issues though, that we have to kind of focus on is the only policy that we do have is this expanded Medicaid. We don't have paid family leave. We have a minimum wage under seven twenty-five, and we don't have universal pre-K. So these are some things, categories, areas of interest that if we, if we start to kind of research, find out what's going on in our community, we might be able to help, um, in some ways. So, just wanna keep that on our plate.
Well, I know a lot of women struggle with, I forgot who mentioned this, I think it was Dune Brook that mentioned that the actions for healthcare providers for Medicaid women.
There are very, there are very few here, and yes, after that it'll be affected, are gonna be receiving Medicaid. And so they don't have a choice because some of the offices don't accept Medicaid. And then some of those that do, they don't give out enough information to help them, so it's wise if you take an advocate with you.
Yeah.
You need to take some with you when you go, because you, if you wanna stay in there long enough, in five minutes, they're gonna boot you out the door. You don't get a chance to ask your questions. And I always tell them, take a notepad with you, have your questions. They have to answer or give you something.
I know a physician that quit because she got in trouble for spending more than ten minutes with a patient.
And that's a hundred and ninety dollars for ten minutes.
Yeah.
Yeah. So is that one of the, so, I'm sorry, mind me being new, is that one of the things that we can, I think, access to all things that women need has always been a secret. It's just like, yeah, that's available to you where and how. And I think that, living in the times that we are in, unfortunately, we live in an electronic age where all information is available to people. But if you don't, it's kind of like, not know, yeah, it's like not knowing how to spell a word. You have a dictionary, where do you start looking, right? Um, and so that is what has, I have seen, and I'm new to this community, and, and, you know, I say, you know, I'll ask people a question about so-and-so, such-and-such, and I'll be like, no, I've never heard anything about that. And I'm, I'm new to this city, and I heard about it. And I think it has a lot to do with socioeconomic and those various things. So if we're not meeting people where they are, then we have to meet them where they are.
Bell and, and they're making decisions about what's good for this population. And that population is not present on that committee. Correct. That's what happens.
Yeah.
This is what you need. Well, you didn't ask me what I needed, you just told me, and that may not be what I need. And so we get on these committees and boards, oh, this is good for you, but, but the people that we're helping are not on those, they're not present.
Hence the listening sessions, is getting people to the table.
Those people that kind of fall through the cracks where they don't qualify for Medicaid, but they can't afford their own private insurance. Or even if they have insurance, because it's so expensive, I can't afford my medical bill now because I, all my money's taken for insurance and whatnot. You have those people who are in that crack that have no options, like, because they don't qualify, they're not low enough to qualify for this, but they can't make that now.
Seniors. You see a lot of seniors in the store buying pet food. Take a look at that. A lot of those people don't have pets. They really don't eat pet food. And they're like a lost generation, and they shouldn't be.
And, and we haven't talked about, um, our Hispanic population either.
Yep.
So-
Women of color.
Yeah.
We have a doula that works out of our office, and she's, uh, doing the Hispanic, uh, population in the port, Porter, St. Joe, and Elkhart. She's got those counties to cover.
Wow.
That's a lot.
Yes, it is. Yes, but there are more than just her, there are a lot of people that need the services.
Yeah.
And so she's his, since she speaks Spanish, and, uh, I think she speaks three other languages. Those are the counties that she goes to. I think she's got twenty-nine clients.
And part of the, the, Indiana has, uh, okay, doulas, right? There's a program now, I'm sorry, I could tell you the organization.
Under Medicaid, it's supposed to be paid for, but doulas-
It's having a problem, like, it's not, they're not getting the funding.
It can't be licensed to get paid.
Right.
Yeah, from the state. So, there's, there's some other.
Right.
So we will only pay you if you're unqualified. No, if you're uncertified.
If you're unlicensed, so Medicaid will, the state said, we will fund doulas. But the individual insurance companies like Anthem, uh, will only pay people that are licensed. Well, there's no licensures for doulas in all of the, in the whole nation. So, yeah, so the individual insurance companies are like, well, we're not paying for it, even though the state says they gotta pay for it.
Yeah, 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 so, yeah. In twenty eighteen, or in July twenty nineteen, they, dula services were added to covered care. But it's not happening.
There's no licensing board at all for it.
Cause it doesn't require them, basically, right?
So I just wanted to keep, to really keep the conversation going, and hence why we have the certain speakers coming in this year, but also in the, in our annual meeting, of really looking at this in, in a, a bigger way. So, just wanna keep that on our table here. And then the next one is, Together We Will Funding Opportunity. This is a really interesting program. Um, um, they offer mini-grants and technical assistance. Program focused on funding community projects that impact eight public health priorities. One of that is infant motor, infant and maternal mortality, environmental justice, substance use disorder, mental health, COVID-nineteen hesitancy, access, violence, and structural and systematic barriers. So this is a rolling grant, um, from, starting in December twenty twenty-one through twenty, June twenty twenty-three. The budgets are between a thousand to seventy-five thousand. Um, multiple projects can be submitted, and each project must be completed within twelve months. I've left the, the website there. I think there's a lot of doable projects for us in here. And, um, even I've talked to someone who would be willing to write the grant for us at a fee, but, you know. That's okay.
We have some funding.
We have, and we, and we have funding. We will have funding this year. So we, we need to put it to good use. We can't sit on it. We need to spend it. And we need to spend it on, on programs that can be helpful in our community. So if you get a chance to just look at that, um, again, something else I'd like to kind of process through, um, Belle was looking at them for us as well.
Also mentioned with the infant mortality, um, so a lot of women, so Medicaid will pay for lactation services, but only in the hospital. So if your hospital doesn't have a lactation consultant, which the last time I checked, they did not, then all the women in our community that have Medicaid don't have access to a lactation consultant unless they pay cash. Which, those are the people.
Yeah, and the most people that need it the most.
Yeah. So, so good, so just, lots to keep our brains going on. Um, um, so now we have, now we're to the next, we're almost done, public comments. You have any comments?
No, I, I, it's been a little while since I moved, you know, since I've been away from the community. There was a Keys to Hope Community Center. It used to have be like a resource center. Are they still there? I'm just wondering the partnerships that, I mean, back when I was in the commission, one of the things we talked about was doing it alone or partnering with different groups. Um, you partner, you're like twice as strong, you partner with three or three times as strong. And just finding out what they have, what the need is. It might be as simple as getting the information to the right location and then posting where people can go for information, cause two-on-one can only do so much. You know, people can pick up and call, what is it? Is it two-on-one? Or is it four-on-one?
Two-on-one.
It's two-on-one.
Um, cause four-on-one was information back when I was growing up, sixty years ago.
I do remember that.
I've retired and I'm much older, but nothing about. I think that, that, um, I'm happy to know that the commission is going strong. I'm grateful to see the work that you're doing. And my, my comment is to keep going strong. I'm thrilled to have to come in and see how strong you, you ladies are, and how involved you all are, and everyone at the table is contributing. It's just amazing. Nothing's changed, and I love it. I mean, it's changed for the better. I'm looking forward to next week.
Yeah. And I, I think that, that's fantastic. And I think that was the origin of the commission, is that every woman came in with something, a project that they were working on. It's something that we can think about. Every woman should have a project and something that we really wanna focus on.
Yeah, I was, uh, one of the first at the table with you. Um, and, oh, we were, at the time, it was like the blind leading the blind. We were all just sitting there trying to figure out, okay, what should we do first? And how, and we thought we could conquer the world, and then we backed up and realized, well, you know.
We went in another direction.
Yes. One piece at a time.
We're bad about the women.
Yeah.
So, um, so this is great. I mean, moving forward, and, you know, you, you said there's a lot of grants. I say, get the one that you know is going to be the best bang for your buck. The, the, you know the numbers that you have at the table, who you impact the most, and, I mean, you'd love to go after all of them.
Yes.
But, um, there's some grant writers out there that'll do it for free, if they know that it's all contributions and you won't even have to pay for something, write the grant. Just FYI. And reach out to your college. Ivy Tech is in your back, backyard, and they have a grant writer. And call them and say, you guys are in Michigan City, and I work there, that's why I took you, this is it. And we'd like to know if you would partner with us by allowing your grant writer to take a look at some of our grants and help us write that grant. They might contribute that, and, um, it's a great contribution, but they're not the only college and university that you have locally, and they all feed off of your-
We did have an offer from Notre Dame at one time, and also from, um, Valpo.
Alpert University?
Yeah, was it Valpo? Yeah.
Alpo University, yes.
Offered to help us at one time, too, and we need to take advantage of it.
Well, there's diversity grants out to Wazoo.
Well, maybe someone can help us with the website, because Shar and I are not doing any tech work.
And, and they have women designers, and they have, I mean, you just reach out and think about what you need. Um, something very simple, that does not gonna cost them a lot of man-hours, they'd be happy to contribute. And, but reach out to all of them. I mean, there, there's people in your community attending these colleges and universities, and it's a great partnership. If your people, your tax dollars that are going here in Michigan City are also paying for tuition down the street, then by golly molly, they need to reciprocate.
That's good. It's nice.
That's just my-
We're glad to have you.
That's my surprise, I'm getting off.
Great.
They do, and they love when you call to ask them, yeah.
If you have information, you give it to them. Like, we have a lot of stats.
Yeah.
And stuff that we, and we have a lot of stats. The demographics, so all you need is somebody to put it together.
Yeah, and your population, everybody wants it. The diversity is immense. Michigan City has probably one of the best diverse populations in the Midwest, honestly. I'm not saying that, just as I work here.
So we're saying other colleges, who do we ask for?
I would, I would call the college and ask to, to meet. Um, you get vibes when you, when you look at someone in the face. They tend to say yes. And they don't say no. So I wouldn't do a telephone thing. It's easy to hold it and-
You need to look at it.
And then they transfer the call. You ask to meet with the chancellor, with, you know, uh, I can give you his name at Ivy Tech, and I can give you the name for Purdue, and, and just ask to meet with him, that the Women's Commission would like to come to the table. Or their diversity officer. You can ask to speak to their diversity officer.
They'll come to one of our meetings.
And, um, yeah, or, or, or get, or get a group. Get, get two or three women that would be willing to meet with them during their work hours. Um, they tend to say yes to that.
Look them in the face.
Look them in the face. And then just say, what can you do first? These are the things we're doing. What can you contribute? I know you've got people, we don't want all of your staff, but we'd like to know what you can contribute. And it's a write-off.
And let them know they need it. You gotta let them know they need it. You can't say, well, we want you, no, we need you.
We need you.
Well, a lot of times, like, um, for my daughter, she's working on sustainability with her engineering degree, and she attended our sustainability meetings as part of a credit for something she's working on in college. So sometimes there will be students that have that expertise who can partner, and they're getting something out of it, and then you get something out of it.
Kind of like internship.
Yeah.
Bonnie, well, it's good when, if someone's going for like public health or anything that they have grant writing experience on their resume after they leave college.
Well, and some of the programming that can be done with this, um, that Together We Will, it would, you would need to have people to create, to do the programs. Right? So that it might be a nice learning and exchange and, um, financially.
Yeah, they have internships and externships, and, I mean, there, there's just, I mean, it just opens up the whole Pandora's box with-
They have interns come in and give credit for working with us, too.
Oh, yeah. Someone has to monitor them, but yes.
Fantastic. Okay, so Councilor's own comments, we don't have any commissioner comments, anything?
I have just one short thing, brief thing. But, um, at the annual meeting, if we haven't, I mean, the annual conference or whatever it is, if we haven't done this already, can we vote on, uh, one, you know, on the policy to have hybrid meetings?
Yes, yes, we need to do, yeah.
Attend by Zoom.
That was, I did not look through the meetings, but I completely remember, cause I-
That we did do that, so, but I have to go back and look and see. Okay, we voted on that?
In like February or January, I did not come through those meetings.
I know we've talked about it many times, so.
Well, I don't know if that's true, because the, someone from City Hall said that we did not have, um, Gail, I think, called me and said we do not have that capability.
Really?
Yeah.
So do we have to add it into our policy? Because we voted on it.
Yeah, we did.
In the meeting minutes.
Maybe we have to send her a copy of it or something.
Yeah, maybe, maybe that's-
Or the minutes, if the minutes include.
I just might caution, I sit on board, uh, currently. I'm a commission for the state. And, um, they allow the Zoom meetings, but in our bylaws, they had to implement that you're required to meet at least, you know, physically at least so many times a year.
Well, I think it's, it's only the copy from the stage, and you could not do two in a row.
You can only do one Zoom.
You could, you could do multiple. You couldn't do two in a row, and you had to at least attend fifty percent of them.
Yeah, it's an integrity thing. I just, it would make a difference.
Yes, this is-
Yeah, yeah.
Two of our meetings this year, we didn't have quorum, so.
Yeah, and then you have hardships too, so you, yeah, absolutely.
I mean, that would also then determine where we are, our meeting, because we don't have that capability in this room. Yeah, so, it, it, yes, okay, so we can definitely-
Is your internet connection?
Yeah.
Did you get it?
I didn't have a passcode to any of the, the connections, so I just used my hotspot on my phone.
I was gonna say, cause you can't even do it on someone's cell.
I just use my hotspot.
Want to volunteer yourself, it's a monster.
Okay, we made it to the end of our list, everyone.
Yeah, I could run Zoom with my hotspot on my phone with my laptop.